Okay, we're ready. Good evening. We will call the July 6, 2020 Auburn City Council meeting to order. And per the City of Auburn Resolution Number 5533, the City of Auburn meeting location for all council, board, and commission meetings is virtual. All meetings will be held virtually and telephonically until King County enters into Phase 3 of Governor Inslee's Safe Start Washington phased reopening plan. And we will now do the pledge of allegiance. If you would all rise and join in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. And Sean, will you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Here.
Councilmember Baggett. Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember J. Raj.
Here.
Councilmember Malanga.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns. Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Here.
All right. We do, I believe, have one agenda modification this evening, Sean.
Yes, Your Honor. Resolution. Resolution 5537 regarding a grant agreement to utilize portions of CARES Act funding for small business assistance grants has been added to the agenda.
Thank you very much. We have no new business this evening. We have no public hearings. Audience participation currently, since we do have a virtual council meeting, participants must submit written comments via mail, fax, or email. All written comments must be received prior to 7:00 PM on the day of the scheduled meeting and must be 350 words or less. Please mail comments to City of Auburn. Attention, Sean Campbell, City Clerk, 25 West Main Street, Auburn, Washington, 98001. Please fax comments to, attention, Sean Campbell, City Clerk, fax number 253-804-3116, or email comments to scampbell@auburnwaa.gov. We have no correspondence this evening for review. Counsel, I will remind you that Sean did send you the public comment, the emailed public comment tonight prior to the meeting, so you all have a copy of that. We will move to Council Ad-Hoc Committee reports. Council Ad-Hoc Committee chairs may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on assigned tasks and may give their recommendation to the city council if any. We currently have one ad hoc committee, that's Finance, and that is chaired by Councilmember Baggett.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Finance Ad-Hoc Committee, consisting of Councilmembers Sterns and myself, reviewed 51 pages of claims vouchers totaling approximately $5 million and payroll vouchers totaling approximately $2.6 million. As a result of this review, we found no discrepancy or did we have any additional questions of the Finance Department. Therefore, the ad hoc Finance Committee recommends council approval.
Thank you, Councilmember Baggett. All right.
You're welcome.
This evening, we do have the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Baggett.
I second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's consent agenda consists of the minutes of the June 8, 2020, and the June 22, 2020 study session, minutes of the June 15, 2020 regular council meeting, minutes of the June 22, 2020 special council meeting, claiming payroll vouchers described by Councilmember Baggett, and also on the consent agenda, we're setting a date for a public hearing for the Fugitive Sound Electrical Franchise Agreement RN20-0002 for Fugitive Sound Energy, Inc., Electrical Franchise.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Thank you. All opposed, please say no. Passes. We have no unfinished business, so we will move to resolutions. Resolution Number 5534, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Auburn and King County Metro Transit Department relating to Project CP1902 pedestrian safety sidewalk and ADA improvements. To make the motion is Councilmember Brown.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Yeah, thank you. Yes, Mayor, I'd like to move the adoption of Resolution 5534.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Okay, Councilmember Sterns.
I'll second.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Resolution 5534 authorizes you, the mayor, to execute an agreement between the City of Auburn and King County Metro Transit Department relating to a project CP1902, a pedestrian safety sidewalk and ADA improvement.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. If you would all unmute yourselves. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Passes. Resolution Number 5536, a resolution regarding enforcement by Auburn police officers of the face covering requirements of the Governor's Proclamation Number 20-60 and the Secretary of Health's Order Number 20-03. To make the motion, Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 5536.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor described, Governor Inslee issued a proclamation requiring that everyone in the state of Washington wore face coverings, and also, as of tomorrow, businesses are required to refuse service to anyone who does not wear a face covering. When the governor basically put this mandate in place, that every person in Washington statements wore their face coverings that covered their nose and mouth when in the indoor or outdoor public setting, they cannot socially distance and they must be to wear face coverings. Governor Inslee has left the enforcement action for face coverings, not as part of the state enforcement, but as part of local jurisdictions' enforcements. I emailed the mayor, who emphasized that our Auburn Police Department would be looking at doing an educational process in relation to the face coverings. And with that emphasis on education, I suggested that we adopt a resolution for the council to have that statement, so we're basically all on the same page to that effect. As the enforcement is mandated to the local jurisdictions, I felt that having our police officers issuing citations, arresting people, may not be the thing that we need to do on a regular basis. This resolution does not prohibit our police officers from carrying out activities or actions requiring enforcement. So if someone is breaking the law, someone is intentionally on a business property and they're asked to leave or don't, it can be trespassed from the property, or other circumstances like that that would require police intervention. So this does not prohibit them from doing that. It does emphasize that we really look at an educational process so people are aware. I know all of us wear our face masks when we go out. I'm very pleased to see yesterday, I was out doing some shopping, and almost everybody was wearing a face mask. Very few people were not wearing face masks, so I think the message is getting there. And also I want to say is that it's not just our police department that is going to be charged with education. It's all of our responsibility to educate people and to just really let people know that for their protection, as well as others' protection, it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor DeCoursey. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none. Excuse me. All those in favor of Resolution Number 5536, please unmute and say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Passes. Resolution Number 5537, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, authorizing the mayor to develop and execute a subrecipient grant agreement to utilize a portion of the city's allocation of CARES Act funding for small business assistance grants. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I would like to move that we adopt Resolution Number 5537.
Thank you. And it looks like Deputy Mayor DeCoursey for a second.
I will second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As you stated earlier, this resolution pertains to CARES Act funding for small business assistance grants, which are highly needed for our small business in the state of, in the City of Auburn and the state of Washington, and this is something we should be doing and supporting.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? Hearing none. All those in favor of Resolution 5537, please unmute and say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Passes. All right, we will move into mayor and council member reports. At this time, the mayor and city council may report on significant items associated with their appointed positions on federal, state, regional, and local organizations. We will begin with Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple items for me. On June 19, I attended a virtual meeting of the National League of Cities Community and Economic Development Committee. Had about 45 of us all together around the country on that meeting. We met for about three hours, and about halfway through, we broke into subcommittee groups, and the subcommittee I'm assigned to is the Housing and Homeless Group. Virtually everyone across the country is experiencing the same issues, especially related to COVID-19. And the concerns that everybody has universally across the country is still the affordable housing issue, some areas, the lack of it, cost of housing. And most seriously, what people are really concerned about is potential evictions that will happen once moratoriums, either statewide or locally, expire. And there's been a ton of news articles, both by some of the media, on TV, and some written articles, also expressing that same concern when we see that. There have been already a number of court cases that have taken place across the country related to evictions, including one lady who has three children, a single mother, who owed about $4,000 in back rent plus $1,000 in fees, and she has been furloughed and is still waiting for unemployment. So her landlord brought her to court to evict her. So I don't know what the result of that was yet. We didn't say, but I think it's still pending. But that's the situation we're in. So we are meeting again tomorrow morning at 9:00 for another three hours, and I know this will be a topic again across the board tomorrow for everybody to discuss. And then follow up on that, on June 28, we had our King County Affordable Housing Committee, Sound Cities Association caucus meeting. That followed our last Affordable Housing Committee meeting, we thought was important, for the caucus to get together and discuss some of these same issues. And again, what we pretty much discussed in this meeting was the issue related to evictions. You know, currently, we still have moratoriums in place in the state and locally, and there's concern of everybody in our South County cities about the potential of evictions again, once we see the moratoriums lifted. And I can say that I was made aware of one of our local affordable housing properties here in Auburn, where 68% of the tenants in the facility have failed to make one or more rent payments during this time because either they're unemployed and have not received unemployment, or maybe not eligible for it, I'm not sure what the circumstance was, but 68% is a high number. So again, it's something we all need to work toward and to really identify how we're going to be handling this, not only in the cities, but across the entire state with some action, probably by our state legislature, as well as our local jurisdictions. So those are concerns, and as these things continue to evolve, if I get more information, I will definitely bring it to everybody's attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Councilmember J. Raj.
Thank you, Your Honor. I really don't have anything to report this week, but thank you for calling on me.
All right, Councilmember Baggett.
Thank you, Your Honor. Back on the 17th of June, we had a joint meeting of the Regional Transit Committee, and also the Mobility, let me get the name correct here, it was the Mobility and Environment Committee, joint meeting to talk to everyone about the status of Metro, how they're doing, what their ridership is. They, at that time of that meeting, they had about, had plateaued at around 1,000 riders per day, and that also equated to about 124,000 daily trips that they had been making, which did seem to show a decrease, a slight decrease, but that it was on, going to be on the rise as a result of the statistics that they were pulling. Now, of most significance here, on July 2, the Sound Cities Association was given a briefing by Metro, by the general manager, and basically, the focus there was really on the budget, and the fact that there was going to be about a 2.2 projected billion-dollar shortfall by the end of 2028. So they were looking at about $200 million of a loss in 2020, just moving on out to that very large number of $2.2 billion. Now, even though that is very significant, there are some potential additional revenues that they were working on, including federal aid, Seattle potentially passing the new levy at the time for transit, which would certainly offset some of those costs, but not all of them for sure. The entire metro system will be impacted by the budget shortfall to some level. They are continuing with their planning efforts for growth in several areas, including working on the various locations for the bus barn, if you will, and that will continue. So basically, that's all I have for the report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Hi, thank you. Yes, on June 18, I was on the Zoom with our human development through National Leagues of Cities, and there was about 38 people on the Zoom, and we covered our whole policy, our human development policy. We're reviewing each one step by step, and each one of us were asked to bring it to our city and to review some of the stuff that's been there and to see if we're all on the same page. I have talked to Jeff Tate, and Jeff Tate, I've sent him this policy, it's 280-some pages, and I was, each one of us that were on the Zoom were asked to serve on another committee, and mine was poverty and mental health. This is something that they, all of us are going to take back to our cities and review what we're doing and then report back. As Claude said, everyone is concerned about housing, with the rental agreements. They all did the same thing as we did, had a resolution on making sure that people were safe during this time of the COVID, on not being evicted, and we're going to review on that at our next meeting. I also attended our AWC conference, and I really liked, one of the classes that I took, it was Race Equity and Leadership, REEL, and they played a video that I had already seen from our Hilo, our National Leagues of Cities Hilo organization. They also played the same video, and it's very up to date on how we are so biased, just taking a look at people. We are so quickly to judge. And then at the end of the video, it shows that this person was an attorney, he was, not an attorney, he was a judge, and how he was treated, completely different when they saw that he was a judge. So that was one class that I went to, and the business meetings are long and had to sit through the whole business meeting, couple of hours through that. But other than that, it's really nice to see that AWC is still working really hard for our region. Our Regional Law and Justice, this is my regional committee, I was on that, and they had some statistics that I will be sending to everybody on what, why WCA is doing, they're breaking out with a new program on helping out domestic violence women. So that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Malanga.
Nothing to report on this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, oh yeah, I wanted to say to Councilmember Trout Manuel, that was a really powerful video that was shared at AWC. So I enjoyed attending Association Washington City and the Fugitive Sound Regional Council meeting on the last week of June. I also had the opportunity to attend the Arcadia House grand opening. That was back on June 16, but it's such an incredible resource for our youth who are homeless or struggling and need help, and it's so amazing to see something that, that's just wonderful. It's just so wonderful to see that in our community, and thank you to everyone who worked hard to make that a reality. I also wanted to say that I attended a briefing on June 17 by the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center, and it was on responding to sexual assault in cities amid pandemic. There are definitely a lot of resources, but given the time, I'll just say, you know, the one thing that's important for everyone to be aware of is the 24-hour resource line, and that's at 888-998-6423. And then I'll also say that I wanted to just give a shout out to a young lady in our community, her name is Veronese Kinyone, and she organized a Black Lives Matter vigil here in our Riverpoint neighborhood, and we had about 55 or so people turn out, but it was just really great to see that that young person take leadership in our community, and I'm looking forward to seeing what she does in the next few years. And then just to follow up on what the, with the Deputy Mayor said, please, everyone, wear a mask. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report tonight.
All right. I will go over a few of the meetings and things going on. Our directors, department directors, and I continue to meet every morning for an hour to discuss COVID-related issues within our community. Last week, Executive Constantine, King County Executive, had a Zoom meeting with elected officials and King County Public Health to ask for local governments' assistance in getting the message out for wearing the mask, as some of you have mentioned this evening. There is a website with a lot of graphics and a lot of information that we will be sharing, but also, within the city, we are going to start our own media blitz, if you will, and come up with some catchy sayings and try and make this something that's fun for people, as opposed to an enforcement-based activity, even though the governor has asked for the enforcement. We can make it our own here in Auburn, which is what we always do, and make something very positive out of this about how you're saving lives and how you're not continuing to spread something that can be deadly to your friends and loved ones, or even to strangers by not wearing those masks. So stay tuned, council, we may be asking you to help with some of that public messaging. We are certainly going to be reaching out to our business community for their assistance in this, and I think, again, Auburn does things their own way in a lot of cases, and I think we should be proud of that, and we will continue to move forward in what is best. I think we should be proud of that, and we will continue to move forward in what is best for the City of Auburn and for the people who live here and are in our community every day. There have been meetings of Skip, the South King Housing and Homeless Partners, which King County, South King County City's coming together to work on affordable housing and homelessness issues. That is our monthly meeting. And then also, as I've mentioned before, there is the Pierce County version of that shape, South Housing and Homeless Affordable, let's see, Shape, South Housing and Homelessness Affordability Partners. And so, working on those same issues within Pierce County, since Auburn has that unique position of, of having membership in both King and Pierce County. So the dedication to that work has been steadfast, and I believe even amplified since we moved into the era of COVID-19. We did have a, the monthly meeting for the King County Regional Homeless Authority, that is, there are three representatives from King County, the executive, and two county council members, the mayor of Seattle, and two Seattle city council members, and then SCA has three positions. I am one of those members, along with Renton Council Member Ed Prince and Redmond Mayor Angela Burney, as well as three members with lived experience. And so we are just getting started. Our next goal is to determine who the chairs, and that should be something simple, but, you know, in government, nothing is ever as simple as it should be. So we will be working on that so we can actually answer the question that I ask in a lot of these meetings, how many people have we housed since we've been talking about it today? Other things that we've been doing, I was invited to be on the Auburn Adventist Raw Talk podcast. I was on there about a month and a half ago, talking about who I am personally, but this time, the opportunity arose to talk about Black Lives Matter and racial equity within our community and within our country, and so I appreciate that opportunity with the pastors to come on and talk about those issues that are so impactful in our community. We also had on, let's see, on Sunday, the 28th, no, sorry. It was a week ago Saturday, on the 27th, we had the invitation to the Overcomer Covenant Church, and it was a community leaders discussion. It was the mayor of Federal Way, their police chief, Wang, our police chief, O'Neill, myself, and a few other leaders within the community to talk about all of the issues affecting and impacting us each day, COVID, Black Lives Matter, police, and anything else that, that we wanted to discuss. So I appreciate Pastor G and his invitation for us to be there to discuss the issues of importance facing our community. And with that, I do not believe we have any reason for, for an executive session this evening, and so we are adjourned. Council, thank you very much for all that you're doing for our community.